Word from our engineer that met with us downstairs. And he said that the state had approved our plan that was submitted. And he'll be advertising for three weeks to get bidders for our street paving project. So that'll be advertised and we hope to get some good bids so we can go ahead with our asphalt paving. That's on that state money that we got, that $200,000 grant from the state. That money will come in handy to help pave these six streets that we're trying to get paved. But he let me know, Luke called me and he said, I'm ready to put this out to bids. The states put their seal of approval on our plan and we're ready to go forward. So I wanted to give you all an update. I didn't go over there today, but Tim Kerr came by and talked with me on the rec center. Gave you an update and the floor covering is going down. We're finally to that part. That's one of the finish items. And so we're moving into the finish phases of our rec center renovation. And Jerry continues to have one sign off that he can't get. And it slowed the project down, but we're working through that. We hope to have our building finished and just to... Tim was the most helped up about it today of any day that I've talked to him. He thought the work was really coming along good when he was over there today.
What do they think they'll be done with?
He's saying that maybe less than two weeks now, about 10 days, he thinks that they'll be out of there. So it's in the final phases. We had some condensers for our air system that weren't working right. This is one of the things that we couldn't get signed up on on our inspection. One side was working perfectly and the other side wasn't. So they've been having some trouble with that. I think they're about to get it all solved. I talked with Mike Johnson and we met with a representative from Birmingham that sells garbage trucks. And Mike's let me know that we're probably gonna need the budget for a garbage truck pretty soon. He said that they're having lots of trouble with one of the trucks. We're gonna have to decide when we buy one, whether we want to buy a manual truck or a one-armed truck that's pretty much automated. Some of the cities that have gone to the automated truck are saying that they first thought when they first did it, it was a big mistake. But once it started working for them, cuts down your labor, it's a one-man operation. The guy that drives the truck, operates the truck, picks up the garbage. You've take two people. Mike was thinking he might have to have some additional help, but he said if we got the automated truck, he wouldn't have to have those extra people. He could free up some people to do other jobs for him and the street department.
I saw one of those in operation, none of them, or Smithville. They're pretty neat. What's the difference? What's the cost? What's the cost of one? It's not one manual, one.
$60,000 virtually is the difference in the cost. Plus, you've got to make sure in the deal that you have everybody a flipped garbage can. The guy said it's, it won't work without a flipped garbage can. They said you have to give them a garbage can. He said that's the only way to go at it is to start out right. Garbage cans are about $50 apiece.
Yeah, my question's this. You said $60,000, but how much does it cost total?
About $220,000 for a truck.
In other words, the truck's 160 and you got to add 60 on to it?
That's the truck. Two, about 220 and then you got about 50 times about 2,000 households. 2,000 times 50, what's that? $100,000?
Yeah, that's $100,000.
Yeah, alright, you got $320,000 to get set up for one. But he said one truck can pick up all of Hamilton's garbage. And if you got areas like where the parking is in front of the people's sidewalks at their houses, like over at Keith's Ranch, you'd take your manual truck and just pick up those odd places like that. He said one truck will work Hamilton.
How many people would that put out of job?
It won't put anybody out of work. We're down to the point that we're gonna have to have some additional labor to carry on the work we've gotta do in our street department. So it won't cost anybody their job. Something we need to consider, he wants to come back. He just came as a preliminary the other day and talked to me and Wade and Mike. But he wants to come make a presentation to the entire council and show you the percentages of having a manual truck versus what we can do with an automated truck. Mike mentioned that about a third of our families' households already have a flipped can. And he said that if you give these other people a new can, you'll create a storm if you don't give everybody a can that's got garbage.
And the cans cost how much?
$50 apiece.
And how many customers?
About 2,300 customers.
Would you credit the people that already have a can?
Well, that's what, he said you can do it two ways. You can give each household another can or you can give them a credit on their bill for the 50 bucks. We're charging $60 a can now, but we only buy them 100 at a time. He said when you buy this kind of volume, you can get them cheaper and you can cut your costs a good deal. No, I would believe that. He said they just got finished setting up a town and the town gave everybody a can or credit.
And another, some of the people have got a can like you're speaking of already.
Third of our people have got cans. We're picking up some garbage in some pretty awful containers. They'll be full of water, no lids on them, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I've been driving down some streets.
Tim's put us on notice for the rec center that they've got to have one lawnmower. The newest lawnmower they've got's eight years old. He said we got to have at least one lawnmower this year. They cut grass every day in the summer.
I didn't realize that. Larry told me one time they had 60 acres of lawn. Good gracious. I believe that. Not altogether either, is it?
We cut well over 100 acres on apartments on a regular basis.
That's a lot of mowing.
Yeah.
Good thing we saved that million dollars, but...
But look, these are just some items that we're gonna have coming up in this next year's budget. I just wanted to let you know, there's a few fairly substantial. But still, I think, I think everybody's working as closely as they can. They're just only asking for their needs. The policemen are asking for some, to continue phasing out those Hemi engines we got and those Dodge cars. They're wanting to get a couple of cruisers this year. And they've already told me that they'll settle for the Ford interceptors instead of the Chevy Tahos. So you can buy the Fords cheaper than you can buy the Tahos.
I don't see why they need the Tahos anyway.
They like the Tahos, but they're willing to get rid of those Dodges. They're willing to concede some and so there's possible, they're asking for four cruisers. I was thinking maybe two a year, maybe two this year and two to finish getting all the Dodge products gone. So that's basically the big items that's gonna be needed in the budget for this year. And that's a lot, but it could be worse.
Well, this garbage thing, it's been, it's been, the fact is, it's been needed for a long time. It's been a long time.
Well, the guy that made the presentation to us said some of the cities are scared to continue to put those men on. He said years ago, the firemen went inside the truck. They made a double cab truck for these new fire trucks. They're inside, they don't hang to the back, run to the fire like they used to. And he said a lot of the cities are afraid to continue to have those men standing on that platform in the back. They're totally exposed to whatever, the weather, everything. And somebody running in and smashing them against the truck, not stopping for them when they're stopped out there in the road. And it's dangerous and having a man on the back of the truck. He says one truck will pick up Hamilton's garbage. And he was basing it on tonnage. And Mike told him how much tonnage we have each day. And he said, well, one truck will pick up all of Hamilton's garbage. And he said, you will probably have to use your spare truck to run to these special places where you can't get into the cans. But there'd be three or four places Mike said we'd need to pick up every day like that. Might change the routes a little bit as to which areas are picked up, which day. We're trying to do it with just one truck. We run two trucks every day now in two different directions. So it might change our routing a little bit, but we'll still give good service. That's something for us to consider. And I want the man to come back and talk to us, don't you Wade?
Yeah.
He really knows his business.
He knows his business. I mean, he...
He's sharp as a comb on, you can't fool him on garbage sanitation. He knows it inside and out. He's also a local guy, ain't he?
Well, he, I think originally from Fayette or somewhere, but he lives in Birmingham now.
Yeah, he's lived in Birmingham, but he grew up basically in this area. I've been having people all over the place say, is Loves coming? Is Loves coming? Well, Loves is coming. Loves has already sent their pre-guys to do the testing, both our water pressure and our water capacity and flow pass their test and flying colors down there. They've had a group in here testing for attic seal water and water pressure. They had more pressure than they needed and they had plenty of flow too. So we passed those hurdles. And they had an engineering group in here and a surveying group in here and different bunches. But step by step, they're progressing toward building us a Loves. And no hitches that I'm aware of. There was a little, on our road improvement, there was a little wetlands question across the highway from the Love site. And they've got to get someone to sign off on that. Our guy at NACOG's handling that for us and Heath. So we'll soon have that behind us and everything's smooth sailing at that point to get it built. We've not heard anything negative from Loves. Everything's positive. The community's just wanting it to happen right now instead of later, but...
Maybe that's why it's like today, certainly.
Yeah, it's not time for it to start.
Yeah, that's what you said.
But those months will pass pretty quickly now and we'll be seeing it happen. I did know that they've had a crew in here checking on some things recently. Rodney and the fire department both worked with them and helped them with those flow tests. Our fire department's got that capability. They went down there and monitored and measured the water flow. Everything was fine.
Yeah, good things just happened overnight. I found that out and I think all of us have. Four years goes off in a hurry when you're trying to get something done. It does.
I heard from Senator Jones's office today. His economic development liaison out of his office is coming next Wednesday for a visit, a sit-down visit. So I think our city hosting them in a town hall meeting has planted a good seed with them. And they're gonna come back and do a little survey and see if they can help us with some projects that we want to do. So I'm happy to hear from them today. His main man out of Washington's coming to see us. Angela, I had to run up to a NACOG meeting at Russell today. And when I got back, he had contacted City Hall and left a message as to when he wanted to come. And I had Angela to answer him and tell him to come on. We had a representative from Hamilton at York on Tuesday morning, 11 o'clock, and brought back information about the state long yard sale that's gonna take place in November from York to the state line on Highway 17. And the mayor of York is organizing this. There's people from Millport and different towns on down the way at our meeting. And she's also trying to do a beautification of Highway 17 to make it a scenic drive. Every road that leads to the beach now almost is interstate. You fly and you're looking at, that's car bumper instead of looking at the beauty. But if you go down 17, you get almost to South Alabama. When you get off there at York, you're not that far from the coast. You don't see a lot of big cities. You see a lot of countryside. But she's wanting to do some beautification in all the towns up and down 17. And we're trying to get enough information to bring it forward to our council and see if we want to be a participant in this. And she's just trying to get as many folks as possible. I'd never met Gina and by chance, we sat at the same table at the Japanese-American banquet I went to in Birmingham. I had an invitation from the guy who puts on these banquets. This is for your international trade. And I got to meet some interesting people at the meeting. And I happened to sit with the mayor of York. And she got up and she said, we've been talking on the phone. I said, who are you? She said, well, I'm the York's mayor. And I sat with the Indian Springs mayor, York's mayor, and Montevallo's mayor. And they're all three ladies. I was the only man mayor at that table.
You was at the place. Millport did have one. Yep. Used to.
The mayor of Montevallo said she doesn't draw a salary. They don't pay anything.
We could cut some expenses there.
Cut a lot of expenses, couldn't we?
Have a lot of stuff to pay for from the legal.
What kind of expense accounts she's got, she was at that banquet. She must get some kind of funds. I took my wife with me, but I only leave the bill on y'all for my part. I paid for her part.
What'd you eat? Just pack of, pack of meal each or something?
No, I paid full price.
Save a half of the room or something, boy?
But the guy called me the next day. He was on a train. I was out of the office for a few minutes. I had written him a nice letter thanking him for his, he sent me a personal invitation. And I was the first mayor recognized out of the audience to stand up and be recognized from what city and this kind of thing. They only called eight of us to stand up and be recognized. There were 61 mayors there. I felt very honored to be the very first ones to get to stand, get my applause. Some of them applauded one-handed, so it couldn't hurt me. But anyway, we had a good time. It was amazing to see the culture difference of the Japanese and the American folks and how they interacted. They gave about seven or eight awards for city support that had Japanese industry. Jasper was one of the cities that got an award. They've got three Japanese industries now in their town. I told Mr. Hall, who invited me, that we had a Japanese plant in Hamilton that's been here over 35 years. And I met a guy that used to work for Federal Mobile. And he was called on the stage and received one of the awards. He's running a plant for the Japanese in his city now. Kept to talk with them some. I met Rod Cantor. I'd met him briefly before, but we talked twice. He's the, he is the economic guru for Alabama. If anything happens in Alabama business-wise, it comes through his office. I'm trying to get to know some of these people just a little better. Because I'm gonna be asking them for some business opportunity for Hamilton and soon. So I'm trying to make all the contacts that I can. And I'm hoping something good's gonna come out of it for our community. Item five on our agenda is we have our cable company settled in at our police station. We're charging them the same as we were here. The accommodations aren't quite as good as what we offered them here, but we're still charging them $300 for rent. I just wanted to make you all aware of that. And if anybody has an idea about this, what you want to talk about, keep this in mind and we'll discuss it. It's okay with you guys. I'm gonna let them probably stay there a few months at this and then we may discuss it and see if we think that's a fair amount of rent. We pay them well over $200, I guess, for the cable service. Would you think so, Angel?
Probably close to that.
Yeah. So we net about $100 after we pay our bills to them. Well, the office is maybe not as convenient for them as it was here. It's still a good office. We've got them a receptacle where they can have a drive-up receptacle outside. Our water department had one that they could volunteer to let them use. So we took it up there for their use. It's got a lock and it's suitable for outside weather and that kind of thing. We furnished that in addition to the office.
We furnish a water, electricity and all of that stuff too?
All those.
They're not paying anything?
So they're housed and they have, they don't have a water bill, they don't have an electric bill, heating and cooling. And that's one of the first things we had to do was check out their air conditioning system. They did a little work, some pre-on and a few other little things. So we got them good cool air. So I'll think about that. I didn't really bring it to attention today to make a drastic change now, but I think maybe in a short while, we might need to reconsider the amount of the rent.
Well, it's convenient for the citizens of Hamilton, coming in and everything else. It's good. I would, I'd rather not go up on them or anything if they thought about moving or something. I think it'd be better for people paying their bills.
I'd rather have an office here than to have it like the power company's done, just pull out on us. I was sad to lose our Alabama power office. Some people still fuss about that and so am I. I tried to change it and I couldn't.
I talked to a boy with it. I was on the power today. He said they're keeping that warehouse up there. That's where he worked at. He wasn't moving. Well, I wonder what they're doing with the office where they're sitting? Who's First Nation? I figured it might be them.
They're gonna move their lawn production office over there.
He told me that Minfield would lose there in a couple of years.
Keith Jones told me today to remind all of you, I told him I had a work session this afternoon. He said, be sure to remind all of your council that they're cordially invited to the NACOG fish fry tomorrow evening at 6:00 at the Shoals, Muscle Shoals College. I think it's an extension of the Field Campbell campus. Shoals, what's the name of that college?
Community. Northwest Shoals Community.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be in the gem over there at their facility. And that's right next to the NACOG office. But there'll be, Robert Ader Hope's gonna be there. Most all, your, both our senators, Stutz and Carlin Gudger, I can't say his last name. Pronounce it for me, Scott.
Gudger.
Yeah, okay. He'll be there. Senator Reed was supposed to be there, but there's been some sort of death in either his family or a close friend and he won't get to be there. But almost all the, Representative Kill from Russell, almost all the elected officials that serve us will be there. Ken Boswell from Adeka that represents the governor will be there. John Cooper that's over the... And John Cooper that's over the Alda, he'll be there. Both of them are gonna be making some remarks during the meeting. And there'll be some good fish and some good chicken being served for free. Everybody's invited.
I'm going to that floor.
You won't be serious?
Angela, if you can.
Angela, you gonna go on with it?
Okay, moving right along.
That's yours tonight. You'd be wanting to leave today then, huh?
Okay, anyway, Mayor, what were you saying?
We're gonna have to hit it. We actually are gonna have a, an, a, an award for our bid that was down on Buccaneer Street. The winner of that bid was S.T. Bond. And they turned in a bid of seven hundred and seventy-six thousand four oh six sixty-six. And the city's eligible for a hundred percent reimbursement on any costs that we're out on this project. So this is not a cost by project for us. Buccaneer Street is being done to, to get their product to, to market. And because of that, the state award on this bid was a hundred percent, including all engineering costs. Anything that Angela has to say out, we'll file for a hundred percent reimbursement.
That's great.
We had to pay the pre-construction engineering. All this that they've been doing up to this point.
When we're through.
Supposedly, if we go over that original grant amount, then the city will be responsible for any additional acreage.
But the bid actually came in under the expected bid.
How much is the grant for?
Do what?
How much is the grant for?
Tell us about the, uh, tell us about the special meeting that we'll be having that, that happens because of our bond sale today. That first item that's on our agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm having a shift. I've got a lot of, a lot of stuff going on in my head right now. Monday, no, Tuesday night, Tuesday night, because the city hall will be closed Monday. They will have a special meeting at the start of our regular city council meeting. And it's just basically to vote on the ordinance for the issuance of the general obligation warrants for this new series, two thousand and nineteen bond issue that they're doing, which I believe was just kind of a reconfiguration of the two thousand and fourteen A bond issue we had. Uh, it was initially set that we were gonna save about four hundred thousand dollars. And it ended up, we have saved six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars by them refinancing it because the interest rates are so much lower right now. So I think Rod Cantor is gonna be here on Monday night. And you'll, I mean, Tuesday night, I'm gonna get everybody confused. The meeting is Tuesday night and he'll be here to go over the final numbers.
I would think Reed Kavanaugh will be back with us possibly. I know Mr. Cantor's coming. And I figure our attorney will be here to. And since we met last, Scott lost his mom. She's been buried, Scott Hunt. So if you haven't sent regrets to Scott, you might wanna tell him so when you see him. We did send a flower from the city to the funeral and put an honor on her. We thought that was the right thing to do. What else are we gonna talk about, Angela? Kind of covered the items.
I don't know if you mentioned, uh, they'll be awarding the CDBG Ragsdale project also Monday night. The bids came on net.
Yeah, there's, that, that bid has also been let. And we had a lot of bidders on that job, but.
I can get you the exact figures, Scott, on that other stuff. It was R E V Construction Incorporated.
Yeah.
Submitted a bid for eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's a project that we split, split the cost with the housing authority. We'll have to pay, I'll have to get the exact figures. It was about half of that cost that we will have with the housing authority.
Yeah, we, we got four hundred and fifty thousand from the state to go into this project. And we're putting about two hundred and the, the housing authorities putting the rest. They're getting some street improvements out of it. The drainage part had to be taken out because it skewed the project so much that we couldn't leave the drainage part in it. So it's been amended and, but it's still been amended and the bids have been let. And I told them that Luke could call me to let me know. They're putting the paving up for bids. It'll be in the next paper, it'll run in the journal record.
Have you talked about the schools? We'll be presenting the checks to the schools.
I would not mention that, I think.
On Tuesday night as well. The, this will be the second year of the money that we gave the school. You know, last year was the first time. This will be the second. And that was, you know, what y'all had agreed to was two years.
Yeah. That's our alcohol money, uh, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Hundred and thirty-five is what we agreed to do this year.
This will be the last year.
But of the two-year agreement, yes, that y'all originally agreed.
This concludes the agreement we made with them. Whether or not we continue, that would be, would take another vote, I'd say, because we had a two-year commitment on this. But we were able to get enough funds from our alcohol tax sales to fund this and not have to come out of the general fund with any additional. Our budget will have that many dollars in it.
Anybody apply for draft beer?
No, they haven't. And, and I don't know if, if it's just because they don't know. I don't know if it's something we need to, to send out, you know, maybe reiterate to people. But nobody has applied for the draft beer and that surprises me. I just don't know if they, they don't know it, realize it, you know.
I talked to Officer Schindler and he said no one had approached him.
I don't want, I don't, I don't want no competition.
He said not to have.
No.
That may be something we need to, to let them know that it is okay for them to, to do that. Cause it's been cleared with the A B C board. I mailed them everything, the ordinance that we passed to approve it. So we're okay to do that.
That's amazing. I figured it'd be two or three that they would sell the wrapped beers.
I just don't think they realize that.
Yeah.
It's officially done.
They just had to have a liquor license? Is that all they had to pass?
They already have it. We just had to kind of amend the alcohol ordinance that we had. And Scott did that. So we've, we've got that amendment in there, okaying it. So it's just up to them.
If the restaurant's already selling it, they can't sell it. Is that what you're saying?
So they don't have to reapply to get the?
No, that's my understanding, they don't. You know, they're good. Once we went through all the process with, you know, the ones that we have to okay them to, to sell it in their restaurants or the liquor stores, they can.
Is it only on premises or is it keg beer too?
It's keg beer too at the liquor stores is the, I mean, at the places that sell beer. It's off-premise, you know, they'd have to buy it to, to go.
It's not a good restaurant with on-premise.
Yes, yeah, that's the way the amendment read.
Uh, we had a nice visit over to Hayleville yesterday. Amy, Angela and myself went over and stopped some information from their city clerk and their revenue clerk. Answers to questions we'd had about our collection agency that collects our tax from, and issues our business license. They're with another company now and they say they're saving lots of money and have great support from this group they're with as far as if they have a question, they can get an answer quickly as they can have a text message sent or a telephone conversation. And they really seem to like the system they're on. We're gonna get a proposal from these folks and bring it forward to the council and see if we wanna adopt the same program they have. They say they're definitely saving money by being with these people. And they had found eighty merchants that were not licensed. Since they've gone with this new company, they've issued eighty new licenses to people in their community who were unlicensed and operating. So I don't know what the discovery would be in Hamilton if we get this company and they do a check of all of our licensing and people that are, that should be required to have them. So they had enlightening findings. Eighty people in a town the size of Hayleville who were operating without a license is a lot.
I could be all about. That's what I was thinking too. There you go, they must go all the way to Florence.
Some of those people that do business in your city may be unloading trucks, selling merchandise to people in the city. And if they unload a truck in your city, they're supposed to have a, a business license to come to your city and sell their products. And I, I think some of it was that, but some of it was real close to home. Real close, let's just say. But anyway, they were very pleased with the, the people. It's, uh, it's a subsidiary of H D L. They're, I think they're, uh, maybe were founded in either Colorado or California-based company. But they've got a subsidiary operating, Premier, is that the name of?
Prima Core. Prima Core or something like that.
Yeah.
Is what they kept referring to then.
We, we felt like we got some good information yesterday. And their representative met us over there yesterday and actually bought our lunch. So we not only got good information, we got a good lunch that didn't come out of our pocket. What, what, I don't have anything else today. Have you got anything else?
I do. And I'm gonna ask because I know the mayor's not gonna do it. He's got to have a vehicle. That is the saddest vehicle I believe I've ever ridden in. It's sad. It needs to be.
Can't we let him have one of these Plymouths or Dodges or whatever it's called?
But I'm serious, he, you know.
Knock them lights off of it and scrub the black and white.
It's just kind of embarrassing, you know, because I know he's gotta represent us on certain occasions and there we are.
I'll agree with you.
I know y'all have written in it, but.
They told I had written it, but I know what it.
When we went to Hayleville, we were riding that thing, that's on our seat. It wouldn't be noticed.
And I mean, I really think that's something we need to consider cause right now, like the two thousand and nineteen's are on sale. But you've got to have a car. I know you don't wanna ask for one, but before anybody else in this city gets a vehicle.
I thought this check engine light was supposed to.
I had to drive it a little ways, I thought.
What kind do you need? I mean, what would you need, I mean, what, what?
I, I had not.
Do you need a?
Yesterday's the first time we talked.
I made him, I said, you know, maybe not a Tahoe, cause those are just too big, but.
Something in between.
Maybe not an Equinox, might be too small, but those Traverses are kind of in between. And, you know, I, I think if we, I don't know that. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there because he wouldn't even talk about it. And I'm afraid he's gonna have to blow out or break down some way.
At least on I've got in between those you're speaking of, it's three-seated if you want.
Yeah.
It's, it's a good-sized car, it's medium.
Cause you know, he does have to take people sometimes and those are the times he'll bring his personal vehicle and go. And I can say why.
Some of those you just can't haul them back on.
Why don't you just think about it and?
It rattles.
It's, it's pretty sad and I'm not just saying that. That is, if y'all want to go out and he can load y'all up and drive y'all around the block right now and you'll see what we're talking about.
If y'all think they need to think about it and see what you want and some prices. Figure out what kind of panel wagon you want.
It's a, it's a unique car, I'll say that.
That's an understatement. It really is. And, you know, if he has to haul anybody around to show them stuff, that's, that's just.
It's embarrassing, isn't it?
It is embarrassing.
Somebody to come in here and call the wrecker to come get them out.
And he's had to have it worked on, you know, quite a bit here lately, so.
Don't take much of that.
April war.
No.
No, we don't.
Don't we get a discount in, on vehicles anyway, the city?
You can get state bids, state bid price.
Two weeks ago, it was eleven hundred dollars to fix the air conditioner.
But wouldn't one of these stations, like, like I'm talking about, the Nissan, like what I've got, it's three-seated. It's kinda in the medium. Of course, you can get a Toyota or whatever, the same medium, whatever you. But that would be more the size, wouldn't you would need? If you needed that third seat, it would be in there.
I'll need a real big vehicle. A lot of the time it's me in it. But, um, yeah, that intermediate size would be really nice.
How many seats is that Traverse got in?
It's a three, three-row.
That'd be a nice one right there. It's just like the Nissan that I've got.
The Chevrolet.
But it's a Traverse.
Yeah, we need to try to get a Chevrolet or something.
Yeah, get something.
Home dealership time.
They're, they're a nice vehicle. It's not too big, not too little, not even.
It's got three seats and that back end folds down, I'm sure that's what matters.
But he has to have a vehicle. I just cannot stress that enough. I, I'm surprised. I just can't believe he's made it to.
I was just gonna drive it without the check engine light on.
My goodness.
Gus told me not to go out of town on those tires. He said they're dry-riding and he said they're gonna blow out.
Well, we can go here, the next meeting. I don't think any of us are against you getting a vehicle.
No. I wasn't gonna ask for one, I wouldn't.
But I think he's got all the good he's gonna get out of this one.
It would be a good car to pick the mail up then, maybe.
I don't even know about that.
About three miles around drill.
I'm just not sure about that.
I don't have anything else to say, and I appreciate you being here. I'm going to the fish fry tomorrow night. If anybody wants to ride with me, they're welcome.
I don't know where I want to or not. I'm not going to the city.
Don't do it. Don't go in that car.
Well, why don't y'all just start looking at what you're gonna do? And I think we'd all agree to start looking at what.
I know on one of those vehicles, I'm not sure if it's the one that Rodney got or the one Mike had. You know, we faxed out a bunch of requests for bids. And... But I'll double-check with Scott Hunt. You know, that... That worked. That was legal, um, to do it that way. Because we sent it out to a bunch of dealerships just requesting a... A bid price for, you know, a certain type of vehicle.
I think we could. We need to get it here in town.
This takes first. Can you get any kind of vehicle to present?
Uh, you can probably get...
I would think so, where...
Fords or whatever.
I... I believe Donahoe Chevy had the state bid there across the state. Uh, but they... They had it on Chevrolet. I think they can get you any model of Chevrolet that you wanted.
Got a good woman on her car.
Yeah.
We got a... Got a good second to that. It's something better to go to the post office then. Let's let it get some beer.